Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order, please. Roll call of attendance?
Done.
Is there approval of the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have to approve the consent agenda, which tonight we are accepting thirteen thousand five hundred dollars in contributions from our community groups and our community members. We are very grateful for these, and all of these will be used to further the mission of the school district and be used towards the wishes of the donor. But we're very grateful and thank you to everyone. Need a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Tonight, we have a MAFE presentation about the Fall Fund Drive. And Kristy Skillings is coming to give us a little presentation. She's the co-chair of this committee. Welcome.
Thank you.
It's fun to have MAFE come.
Thank you for letting me come. So, yeah, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you guys. A brief introduction, obviously Kristy Skillings my name. I am here representing Monamie Dye Area Educational Foundation. But more so, I'm actually here as a parent. I have two kids who have worked their way through the school district, starting at Wildwood, the old Wildwood, going to OH, working their way through the middle school. They are now residing at the high school. I have a sophomore and a senior. I'm not quite coming to grips with the senior thing yet. That's another discussion. But they're the reasons, I guess, I got involved with MAFE, and they're the reason I got exposed to MAFE. It was my first, a little bit of history, first time I ever was exposed to MAFE was at the gala, probably about twelve years ago. Great way to get introduced to what MAFE was. And it was also my first introduction really, too. We were brand new in the school district. I was blown away. I've told this story so many times. They were raising money for the smart boards that year. I'm pretty sure I didn't even have a smartphone at the time. So the whole concept of smart boards and putting them in the classrooms was hard to get my arms around, but I was like, wow. But that isn't really what was the thing that did it for me. What really blew me away was the makeup of everybody there, the number of people there. But it was, not just the number, it was there were teachers, there were parents, there were alumni, and there were community members of all ages. I could not believe the support that this community has for MAFE and the schools and the teachers. It really, it made a huge, huge impression with me, and I knew we made the right decision to have our kids attending Monamie Dye. So that was really good. I soon after that got involved with MAFE. I've helped with scholarships. I've helped on the grant committee, and I've helped on the Fall Fund Drive, which is why I am here today. Fall Fund Drive is one of our means of generating revenue for our organization. It is not nearly as fancy as the gala or the Legacy Night. There's no fancy dresses, no nice dinners, zero glamour with the Fall Fund Drive, but it's nothing more than just a flat-out ask. And it has meant a lot to us, MAFE as an organization and board members, specifically individuals, to have the support of the school board. In the past, we've been able to proudly say we've had 100 percent participation from the school board in our Fall Fund Drive. I want you guys to know that it means a lot to us, like I said, not only as board members, but also when we're out in the community and we're speaking and we're talking, maybe even to potential donors, to be able to use that and say that. It's a huge, huge support system for us. So thank you. I'm here to ask, but once again, whatever you guys are comfortable giving, we would appreciate anything you can do to help us with the Fall Fund Drive. And also, anybody that is in the community that might be watching or listening. We sent letters out to new families, to past donors, asking again, just simply take some time, write a check, or go online. You can almost go to our website, mafegives.org, and make a donation. We have been here for thirty years, and the only reason MAFE exists is through the support we're getting from the community. If we don't have that support, we're not around. So I'm hoping that we still have that wonderful community support, and we can continue to be here for another thirty years. Thank you.
Thank you for all of you.
Thank you, Kristy.
The check? Did, what did? Oh. The check?
The check.
Is this? Are you supposed to check?
I'll explain, I'll explain the check.
Thanks, Greg.
It was done very last minute, but we have a goal of fifty-five thousand dollars. And so I prematurely, right, wrote this out hoping for, and so that just kind of is a visual of the amount we hope to raise this Fall Fund Drive.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming to talk to us. And again, I would echo what you have just said, is that we all need to participate, even at the littlest bit that you can or the biggest bit that you can, so that we have, we can say to the community, this board supports MAFE. Thank you. Well, Luke, what is happening?
My turn. All right, I typed up a little report of what's happened around the district from the student perspective. I suppose we can start off with Wildwood. On October fifteenth, Wildwood had their annual PTO fun run. This fundraiser allowed kids to do all sorts of running activities to raise money for PTO and Wildwood. On October sixteenth, kindergarten had their Fall Frolic, which held many fun fall activities, activity stations for the kindergarteners during the day. On October seventeenth, kindergarten students went on a field trip to the Pine Tree Apple Orchard, which is crazy, because I remember that field trip.
I remember that field trip with my children.
Anyway, I love the Pine Tree Apple Orchard, so that got me excited. On October thirty-first, first grade had their pumpkin math and activity where students invited parents to help cut open pumpkins and do fun math problems with the pumpkins and the pumpkin bits. And on November eighth to fifteenth, they had their scholastic book fair. Moving on to OH, from, no, on October seventeenth, OHA had their Nature Trail Fun Run Day, where students could participate in all sorts of nature-themed activities, and they got to run around and release a little bit of energy. So I suppose that was probably a good thing for students. On November eighth to fifteenth, they also had their scholastic book fair. And then on the twelfth to the thirteenth, fourth graders had an opportunity to go on a field trip to Base Camp, an indoor activities facility, which included activities like rock climbing, rope courses, and archery. Moving on to the middle school, the middle school had their conferences just this past week and the week prior, along with the rest of schools in the district. And, not coincidentally, they also had their scholastic book fair from November eighth to fifteenth. Finally, moving on to the high school, fall sports such as football and cross-country have come to an end unfortunately. However, winter sports like Monamie Dye Alpine, Go Zuffers, have started to move in. I'd also like to give a congratulations to the girls soccer team, who won state on November second. Yeah, clap for them. That's impressive, back-to-back. And also, a congratulations to the Monamie Dye Swim and Dive Team, who headed to state today, after taking second place in sectionals. However, I tried to get a report from them, did not get a report from them. But I'll be back next month with reports. On October thirty-first, Halloween, students were allowed to participate in Halloween festivities and got to wear a costume to school. That was pretty fun. On November fourth, Student Leadership Council members helped unload and shelve exactly one thousand eight hundred and seventeen pounds of food for the St. Jude's Food Shelf. On November sixth, students both had an opportunity to donate blood to the Red Cross and participate in a school-wide mock election. On November eighth, all students enrolled in a U.S. history course, had the opportunity to listen to a panel of local veterans speak about their experiences while serving for the U.S. military. On November fourteenth, students wore blue-colored clothes in recognition of National Diabetes Awareness Day. And finally, from November fifteenth today to November eighteenth, Monamie Dye High School will be putting on a production of Once on This Island, of which I have many peers performing and participating in. The first performance started an hour ago, so we missed that, but don't worry, because they have another performance tomorrow night at seven, Saturday night at seven, and Sunday afternoon at 2:00 p.m. I would encourage you all to go out and see the show. I've heard terrific things about it. That's my report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How many pints of blood did he donate, do you know?
Oh, I have no clue.
And were there rules about your costumes?
Yes, of course. No, school-appropriate, and, you know, no weapons of any sorts, or...
No blood, no?
No blood, or gore, or anything like that, wearing school-appropriate clothing. Having a fun time. You had to have fun while wearing a costume.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. We need to move... Our minutes from October eleventh and October twenty-fifth. Need a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Calendar begins. Maybe you want to call anything out, other than the school play?
The MSBA conference is coming up in January. I believe registration is open, so if you'll be attending the leadership conference in January with MSBA, and I think most of us are, to be a part of the presentations we've put forward, please let Laura know, so she can get us all registered.
All right, many of us are participating in the roundtables. Isn't that, are we going to try and all show up at lunch?
Be nice.
Be nice.
Be nice, which is Thursday, right?
Mm-hmm. It would be great, okay, I was going to save this for later, but I'm going to jump in, because it would be great if you did show up, because as a board, you're being recognized with, yeah, so you have, you're winning the, well, you are, you've earned the district award of distinction. As a board, as a board, that's what it says here, and you're being presented with an award, so it'd be really great if we all came to lunch. I assumed you knew, and I was just going to call it out.
What are the criteria of...
Yeah. So to achieve this award, the majority of the current board members, you have either received either an MSBA President's or Director's Award. Well, so, and I can, well, yeah, so you're winning, it would be great if we all showed up for lunch, because I was going to be there to cheer you on, so. Let's just plan on that. I'll just take that as my...
We need to let Laura know.
So congratulations.
Because we can sign up for just that, instead of signing up for the whole thing. We can, Laura just needs to get us a reservation, you check in, you get your ticket, and you can just do that, if that works out best in your schedule.
And the nice thing about the leadership conference is it's free, except for the lunch. But all the rest of it is free, and we're the only state that does that. So it's a good, good value, free is good value.
Free is good. All right.
Luke, will you be able to join us?
Yes.
Or we can excuse him for school. Actually, I just, we need to... Insulation Finishing Systems Project. Bill?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight and recommend approval to proceed with advertising for bids for the EFIS project. And EFIS, as Julie reminded me, stands for Exterior Insulation Finishing System. And what we're talking about here is the building envelope and repairs that are due at the middle school and high school. Julie has discussed this at length at previous facilities committee meetings, and really what we're talking about here is three different areas at the middle school and high school. The high school, second-floor addition from nineteen ninety-six, the high school Chautauqua Fine Arts Center, and then the middle school rooftop penthouses. So they are all reaching the end of their life from a EFIS building envelope standpoint. As we mentioned before in previous facilities committee meetings, mold testing was requested and has been done on all three areas, and all three areas came back negative. So that is a good thing. And then finally, from a timeline standpoint, we are here tonight seeking approval to advertise for the bids. If approved, the advertisement would show up in the following two weeks, so November twenty-first is a Wednesday in the White Bear Press, and then the following Wednesday, November twenty-eighth. So those would be the two weeks. December twelfth would be the bid opening, and then the recommendation would come to the board at the next meeting on December thirteenth. And just a point of reference here, so the budget for this project will come from long-term facilities maintenance. So our deferred maintenance allocation in two thousand eighteen, nineteen, we have a budget for this project, and just related to timely, because we had the operating levy last week, it is not related or coming from the operating levy allocation that was passed last week. This is a different, different category of funding. So I'll take any questions if you have them, otherwise we would just recommend approval to advertise for bids.
It's good that you pointed out that it's not any money from our... Any discussion or questions?
Should we make a motion first?
I'd move.
Second.
Any discussion or questions?
Bill, do you know, and maybe this is a Julie question, are we still on a timeline that allows us to get a reduced price because of getting them started prior to the summer timeframe?
We are, exactly. And that's why you're seeing the recommendation advertised tonight, rather than after the first of the calendar year. If we're able to advertise and award the bid in December, we feel that we would have a chance to get a better rate than if we were to award that bid in, let's say, February, when things are really ramping up for spring.
Thank you. Anything else? All in favor of approving this, say aye.
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 Thank you. And here comes the audit.
So my part for this is just to welcome Jim Eichden from MMKR CPA firm. Jim is the managing partner at MMKR. MMKR was out to do the audit of our two thousand seventeen, eighteen financial statements in September, and then again, the beginning of October. Just my point that I'd like to point out, I certainly enjoy working with Jim and then his staff. So certainly, they bring a benefit to our district from an auditing standpoint, they also bring a benefit to our district all year long. I have called Jim many times when I've had questions on the chart of accounts, or how to account for something, and just having that connection throughout the year really provides for a smoother audit during, during the audit time. So with that, we'll welcome Jim.
Thank you. Welcome back.
Thank you. Thanks, Bill, for the introduction. Again, my name is Jim Eichden. I'm with MMKR CPAs, the managing partner and the partner in charge of the district's audit. I'm here this evening to provide a presentation of the audit results for the year ended June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. Is my technology going to work, is the question? Maybe I'm hitting the wrong button. Oh, I should use the... Well, I can talk while he's working on the technology. One, before I get into too much information, there we go. I will just kind of lead into the positivity of this presentation. There's a lot of very positive things happening in the audit area, some of which starts with, or most of which starts in the business office. But I really want to point out, one of the enhancements, before I get into too many details, of this year's financial report is, for the first time, the district has issued a comprehensive annual financial report. You'll see in front of you a much thicker document. It is a document that is a program that's sponsored by the Association of School Business Officials, ASBO, and will be submitting this document for a certificate of achievement in financial reporting. With the work of the business office and, and many others, the district will be, has provided a document that's much thicker and much more transparent in the information that it provides. So if you get an opportunity, if you haven't looked at that financial report at all, you'll find a number of additional areas, specifically, in the front of the document, there's a transmittal letter that provides some enhancements in terms of just leading into the document. And then at the, at the end of the document, there's a statistical section that has really ten-year tables of information on a variety of areas that you've never seen before in a financial report. So it'll certainly take some time to briefly look at those if you get an opportunity. So in my PowerPoint, as part of this process, I do provide opinions on that comprehensive financial report, as well as the internal controls of the district. And we're also required to audit the compliance with various laws and regulations depending on the circumstances of the district. There we go. So when it comes to the audit results, we were able to issue a clean opinion on the district's financial statements. It isn't what's technically called an unmodified opinion, but it was the opinion you were looking for. As far as the, the internal control area and the compliance report, we really have one reportable item. The district's size of its office really allows for, or really has, by definition, a limited segregation of duties. We report that to the board, and that, that is the reportable area that we go through when we look at our audit. We really understand that that's a limitation in the size of your audit, and we audit that way. That's really an item that you can expect to continue for a district your size, and really no corrective action really needs to be taken. As part of our audit, we look for what I would call other controls that overcome the limited segregation of duties, to make sure you have the appropriate controls in place, which, which we believe that you do. As part of the audit, we also audit your federal awards, which is called the single audit. Your single audit really is required by the federal government, and really is a separate audit altogether. And then lastly, the auditor of the state of Minnesota, the State Auditor's Office provides us with a list of laws to test, and we did not have any findings in that area. So as I summarize that particular part of this presentation, you'll see that we didn't have any findings to report, which is excellent. Exactly the audit results you were looking for when we started this process several months ago. So that's also a very commendable audit result. So in my, in my documents that I provided, we do issue what's called a management report. In that management report, the intention is, it's really my document as a firm, it provides the audit results in a written document, so that you can understand what happened in the audit without actually me being here to tell you, if you were to read it. In that document, we really get into the second part of any audit, first part being the compliance, second part being the financial results. So in our PowerPoint, we provide some highlights of various areas. The first one is, in that document, we provide some information on fund balances. Fund balances really is the equity position of the, of the district. This particular presentation shows fund balances collectively in all of your operating funds, and compares that to the statewide averages. So statewide averages and fund balances are really twenty percent of overall operations or expenditures. You can see that statewide, that's pretty much been a consistent number for the last several years. It did go up significantly after some of the economic turbulence we had in two thousand eight. You're seeing fund balances very stable statewide. In the, in the Monamie, Monamie Dye School District, you're seeing some declines in fund balance. The fund balance for this particular year ended under this particular presentation at eight point five percent. I'll, I'll get into a different percentile later, which is actually the percent that the district uses for its policy. This was expected in some of the, in the budget that was approved, or revised budget that was approved. So you're seeing consistent results, certainly from that particular budget presentation. In my, in my audit, we also provide information on comparables regarding revenues, both on a, on a per-student basis, but also in total. This particular presentation stands out to me in that, in the general fund, in two thousand seventeen, the district had roughly eleven thousand six hundred dollars of revenue on a per-student basis, and that compares to comparable numbers in the Seven County Metro of twelve thousand eight hundred. So you're actually generating less revenues per student overall in those, in that years, which is not really a concern, just something that you should be, that you probably already are aware of, but it is good information to take in. You're seeing a slight increase in that revenue number in two thousand eighteen, really related to additional general fund allocations from state aid. We also provide information on expenditures in the area of spending per student. Again, focus on the general fund, in this case, the non-capital expenditures. You'll see that in two thousand seventeen, you had eleven thousand four hundred dollars per student spent, when on average, in the state, in the Seven County Metro area, it was twelve thousand one hundred. Now, you would expect that, given the, the revenue graph I explained earlier. If you have less revenue, you're going to have less expenditures on a per-student basis. Again, in two thousand eighteen, you're seeing some increases in, in that particular categories, and most notably, in some vocational areas and some district support areas. So I mentioned that we would get into the general fund financial position. In two thousand eighteen, the general fund financial position did decline to a fund balance of two point eight million. I'm going to get my notes before I misspeak here. At the end of the year, the general fund's financial position ended at a fund balance percentage of roughly four point five percent of overall operations. That's, that's the unassigned amount, amounts that aren't set aside for either restricted purposes or assigned for other areas. So the district's fund balance policy does strive to maintain a minimum fund balance of eight percent. So you are, are below that particular fund balance policy. If you read that particular policy, which I've actually provided in my document, you'll find that there's some action items that would, would trigger in that policy that certainly the administration of this district, as well as the board, is fully aware of, and probably has already taken action regarding that particular percentage. So overall, that fund balance is, action is being taken, given, even given the decline. In my report, I also provide detailed information. You can see that here. I did already address some of these numbers, but that, that particular presentation does show that four point five percent I was talking about. So in an, in an audit, we also look at some key indicators. Some of those indicators include, include the pupil units, the average daily membership of the district. You can see here that the average daily membership did increase slightly. I think it was thirty-nine students with, thirty-nine ATM, which is not exactly students, but the state's calculation of students. So you're seeing some pretty consistent numbers in that particular category. We also provide information in this audit on revenue and expenditure on a budget-to-actual basis. The main purpose of this presentation, to me, is that you want to make, you want to be assured that your audit results mimic the budget. In this particular year, you'll see general fund revenues were thirty-eight thousand dollars over the budget. So this is a thirty-eight million dollar operation, and the overall revenues came in within thirty-eight thousand. That's, that's extremely close. That's rare to come that close. Bill assured me that that probably is never going to be that close ever again. I mean, you might be right about that, because I'm not even sure if I've seen it that close. But, but what it does state for you, or what it, what it really mentions to me, is you're getting data that you can rely on to make good decisions, in that, at the end of the day, when the audit comes out, your results are going to mimic those, those projections, which is really important as a board to know. And I've said that here in front of you a number of times, but I think it's very important. On the expenditure side, you'll see, you know, similar results. Expenditures were over budget by about two hundred fifteen thousand, again, on a thirty-eight million dollar operation, in this case, thirty-nine million. That's very, very close. In particular, the one area that stood out was really transportation, that was over the majority of that particular area. So the district does also have other funds, the food service fund, the community service fund, both of those funds had similar results in terms of expectations in, in, in budget-to-actual, and do show, you know, certainly equity positions that are adequate for their categories. So in summary, I did want to summarize my presentation and point out that the audit was real good, excellent, in terms of its overall results. We did issue a clean opinion on the financial report. We, I mentioned the one-inch internal control finding, which I actually consider more of a reportable item. And in my, in my lead-in, I did mention the certificate of achievement in financial reporting. I can't say anything more about that particular, particular item. I, this has been, I don't know, it's been about a year that we've been working on it together. Most of the work's on him, not on me, but putting that document together will not only benefit the district for this year, but for, for years to come. I can't anticipate, I wouldn't anticipate that you would stop doing it once you've got it in place. So really great for the district, as well as transparency of financial results. And then lastly, I did, did mention the overall financial position did meet expectations in the budget, but it is below the policy that is in place, and, and certain actions certainly will be, will be addressed at the board level, as well as administrative on that. So with that, I can open it up for any questions that you have for me. So, with that, I can open it up for any questions that you have for me.
Any questions?
Just maybe a comment. I don't think I've been with a nonprofit or any kind of school thing where there has not been the segregation of duties finding. And MAFE just went through the same thing and, of course, we had the same finding. So, it sounds as if there are some best practices that we could do, knowing that we will have that weakness, that I'd be interested in knowing more about for a variety of reasons. But, you know, it just seems like that one always is there and then what do we do about it? So...
I mentioned the word compensating controls regarding the segregation of duties and to be honest, when I go into an audit, the very first question I'm asking is, well, are you, are you, do you have properly segregation duties or not? Because I go down two different paths in an audit when, when depending on that very first answer. So, what I'm looking for, for compensating controls is looking for people or others to be involved in the process of payables, for instance. It's not just one person who's involved in the payables process. Payroll would be also another area that is a concern. You want to have multiple people in the payroll process or, or even somebody looking at the payroll outside of the payroll person, even though it isn't going through, you know, in a segregation duty system, you may have three or four people involved. Here, you want to make sure you have somebody looking at it in detail. That individual would also need to be comfortable with the district. Somebody that's looking at the payroll list and know, well, these are the people that actually work for us and be able to identify some, any anomalies. So, it's that kind of thing that, that we look for in our control analysis. You know, on the receipt side, making sure that there's involvement in people outside of, of just the people in the business office, that they know those receipts are coming in and there's other people involved in those particular processes, not just one person. So, those are the kind of compensating controls that we look for.
Any else? Does we need a motion to approve the audit?
I'm moved.
Second.
Any additional discussion?
You know what, I just wanted to thank Bill for all his work on this and, and the great job in putting this book together, really impressive. Thank you.
Thank you, good point. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
See you again, not too soon, huh?
Now, we need to approve our resolutions canvassing the votes from the election.
Great. And so, as you know, we had an election for our three, for three of our seats.
We had four candidates. And, and so what you have before you is the approval of the resolutions canvassing the returns of votes of the school district general election and also authorizing issuance of certificates of election and directing school district clerk to perform other election duties. And I think we have to do that in two different resolutions, right? And so, with the first one, congratulations to Julie McGraw, Kevin Donovan, and Mike Chevalier for returning to the board. Gary Baumann also, who has been a really active member and often we will see him at board meetings and in community events, also ran for, for the board, a board seat. And so, we're thankful to all of you who are willing to come and, and be part of this because we know that being a board member is a very, it's a very significant community service that you are providing. And so, for everyone who put their name out there to, to run for board, we are, we are thankful. So, but the first resolution is canvassing the returns of votes of school district general election. And so, I ask for you to move on that as printed in your packet.
Do a second. Second. Any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye. Congratulations.
And your second resolution is authorizing issuance of certificates of election and directing school district clerk to perform other election-related duties. And that is also printed in your packet.
So, move. Second. Any additional discussion or anyone? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
As you know, we also had a special election and we are very thankful for our community for approving our levy request. And we also, so we also have in front of you this approval of resolution canvassing the returns of the special election and this is related to our levy request.
Need a motion?
I'm moved. I'll second. And, and I would like to, I would just like to thank all those that were on the Yes Committee that gave so much time and put so much effort into such a great campaign.
I'd also like to thank the administration. I'd also like to thank our teachers.
Yes.
It's a great effort. And we appreciate the community's response.
I'd like to just also say that I think that Barb and, and Bill did an amazing job at the presentations of the committee, the community presentations. They were very succinct and appropriate and very, fairly well attended, but very, very impressive. The transparency was terrific.
And Alice. Don't forget Alice.
Of course, Alice, great communications. We have a motion in a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, we need to approve our school board schedule. We're changing it up a bit.
Right. And so, we had this discussion at a study session. We were talking about changing the date. We decided to stay with Thursday, but to switch and to have the study sessions at the beginning of the month and the second Thursday of the month and to have our regular board meetings on the fourth. So, it's just swapping those two. The one thing I will just mention is that we do have on our calendar, this coming January, our regular meeting is going to be that first meeting. And then we have that, the school board retreat as January 24th. And so, I will say one question I have for you as we move forward, if we keep this pattern. November and December, we have just, and July, right? We have just the one meeting. So, suppose we're off a little bit on our pattern, so I don't know if that bothers anyone. And then January also, because you have, you'll want to have that first, that second Tuesday, or second Thursday of the month, the first meeting of the month being your organizational meeting, we're not having that as a study session. So, I'd just point that out as kind of, those are, are months that would not follow the pattern of having study session and then regular, so.
That makes sense for January.
Yeah.
Do your organization.
So, I'm, so going forward, so you have the, the meeting schedule, the revised meeting schedule as presented there, so.
Do we need a motion? So, move.
Second.
Discussion.
Go ahead. You go first, Lucy.
So, I'm looking at our school board retreat on January 24th from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. I'm wondering if at the end of that day or shortly after, we could have a discussion about July. We've historically done the day-long retreats. I'm not sure if that's an effective use of a day. And I know many board members need to take time off work, which is a hardship. And so, if we could reflect at the end of that meeting, if the half-day, you know, 4:00 to 8:00 works better for us than the full day and to think about doing that a little differently, if we just consider that when we get to that point? Because we can change our schedule at any time, but if we could consider that, I think that might be respectful of work schedules because I know many of us take a full day off and it's worthwhile, but it's a long day and I'm not sure how effective we become after many, many hours.
Certain period of time.
Right. And so, if this proves to be very effective going to just a four-hour in the afternoon like that, that might be a change we consider in the future.
Okay, don't, don't moan, Judy.
I'm gearing up for it.
Here's what I want to ask. If, sorry. I just really, I really want to change the date that we meet. And so, last time I proposed Monday and Tuesday. I'm curious if we have any interest in rediscussing Wednesday, maybe at our organizational meeting in December? Just to make it easier for parents and for all of us to attend events at the schools, which there are so many on Thursday nights. So, just offering.
I'm not moaning. I'm, I'd be willing to discuss it again. I don't know that it has to be Wednesday. I think we could, I'd be willing to discuss Monday and Tuesday again if it means that much to you. I really am fine with that.
Or, or Wednesday. I don't know. I, I don't know if we could, if we could discuss it again. I would like it.
I'm happy to.
Okay. So, maybe we can put that on our, on our December org meeting? If that, if you think that's appropriate or if we should talk about it at our retreat.
Sorry, may I ask a question? Are you talking for next January or?
No, I mean, the next school year.
Okay, that's what I thought.
The next school year.
Let's discuss it maybe at the.
Whichever meeting you think is more appropriate, I'm fine.
I wouldn't do it at the org meeting. We're not going to change it at that point.
Okay. Well, I, I.
Tossing it out there.
Whichever. I'm fine. Just want to talk about it again. I'm proposing a new day.
Any other discussion?
Hearing that? All those in favor of scheduling this tonight? Please say aye.
Aye.
Meeting reports, AMSD Mike.
There was a, we had an AMSD meeting on the fourth, was it the fourth? November 2nd, excuse me. And it was really cool because guest speakers, well, one of them was Lucy, being on the Professional Educator and Licensing Standards Board and her colleague Alex Lucy, the executive director of that. And so, that was really kind of a special thing, I really. Then, we also had a presentation of the Friend of Public Education Award given to Senators Sandy Pappas and Senator, and Julie Rosen. And had a brief question and answer session and I, I had the only questions. It's weird. But, they, they were, they, I just asked them for some of their priorities and they, they were really, really pretty decent priorities and I enjoyed hearing from them. We had also a guest speaker, Kevin Rupp of Rupp Anderson Squires and Walzburger, talking about the Janus decision and on requested leave of absence law changes. And I found that very enlightening because I had questions regarding the Janus decision and, you know, how that affects things. And it was purely just on the, the financial part of it was the only thing that was looked at, judged at, you know, the only thing. And so, as far as, you know, the dues paying and the fair share stuff and being included and excluded in the union or something, that, none of that was what was, what was adjudicated. It was just the pay and the fee, yes or no? And that was it. So, I found that very interesting and so the rest, there'll be other suits coming up, I think. But, it was very interesting and rather enlightening for me. So, it was pretty cool, really good meeting.
And I'll give the MAFE and then I actually have, I have a special ed update, I have a gifted update and another update. So, I can give those at the end too, if you want me to. The MAFE, as, as Christie Skillings mentioned tonight, the Fall Fund Drive is taking place. So, if you want, you can leave your check with me if you have time, otherwise with Kevin later. October 24th, they had morning with MAFE at the high school, which showcased how MAFE uses, how MAFE supports students at the high school. And there was a fantastic musical performance by both the band and the theater group. There was a student panel where students shared their personal experiences at Met High School, all of which had a very different experience. It was very powerful. The student panel was extremely powerful and it was an impressive event. If they have it again, which I would imagine it was successful enough, that it's, it's worth attending just to see the great things going on. The 30th anniversary party was last Saturday night. Great band, great party. If you didn't attend, you missed some fun. It was a lot of fun. But Kevin was not wearing a disco shirt this year, so. The MAFE, the MAFE board just completed their audit process over the summer and that was required of them because of the amount of money that they have in their accounts and they received a, a clean audit as well. MAFE continues its support of the Weekend Back Food Program. And I just want to share with you how the numbers are going up. Last year, MAFE sponsors, so when it does a sponsorship, they come back whenever they need more money, they give them just a set amount. Last year, there were 60 kids in the Weekend Food Backpack Program and this year, there are 81. So, that's just something for everyone to keep in the back of their minds. Some other dates of note, the teacher grant applications opened up on November 1st and they go through January 14th. Student scholarship application open on December 15th and go through February 11th. The VOTAC scholarship applications are open through April 19th. The Carol Fargo Performing Arts Scholarships are open from February 1st to March 31st. And if we had it on our sheet or not, December 7th is the Tree of Light Ceremony. And also, March 30th is Legacy Night. Just keep that on your calendar. So, I can give more information at the end.
Lucy?
School Board Association. So, this year, as you know, seeing your email, you get an update from me through MSBA after each of the board meetings. So, that shortens my report, luckily. So, you've been getting those. If you have questions, reach out. I've heard from a couple other board members from, within the district, within our MSBA district. Other than that, we're getting ready for a delegate assembly. Julie is one of the delegates. Those positions will come up for election again next year. And so, if you might be interested in that, they'll come open next year after this round. Nothing, or shouting on the delegate assembly platform, they'll, they'll work on approving that and then the upcoming conference, so. And I, are you going to report on, Tommy? You reported to us in board notes about the number of presentations we have.
I can, I can, I can, I think I can pull them forward.
Okay.
If you want. We have, oh, there's Laura. I'll look to her. Do we have four round tables? I believe we have four round tables and then we also have a student group who will be presenting in the showcase, is that a showcase of?
Media broadcast.
Okay, it's media broadcast. We also have, we also have Dr. Kathy Wyland and will be presenting on some of her, some of the senior programming for community ed. So, so I, I, we're, we're going to be well represented there.
And at lunch.
And at lunch. Winning, I mean, it's just going to be all about Montamena, I think, at this.
Thank you. You pulled those forward very well.
Yeah.
916 Board Reporters in your packet. Subcommittee reports.
I just have one comment on the 916 piece. I went over this morning and toured Pankalo and found it absolutely stunning. I mean, it's just amazing. And so, you know, the big point was just how much the environment itself is so conducive to the kids that are attending there and help them with their day. There's all sorts of different design elements that are just fascinating. To the little window, which I remember when we were looking at the Lawwood School and they had the windows too high. I mean, we had kindergartners and they had the windows that were, you know, quite high. And over at Pankalo, in each room, they have a window on the ground level with a little spot where you can actually, it's, you know, there's a shadow box about this much and you, the kids apparently will go in and love to sit in that little thing and look out the window. So, it's, it's a neat building, very, very well done and great presentation. I was, I was just impressed. They have a new, a new program they're doing for the, the teachers there and I've forgotten, of course, there's an acronym and I forgot what it is, but it's, again, to really encourage a positive way of being with colleagues and, and most importantly, students. And they do, and it struck me that we, they do this program and then they have teacher coaches then work. So, they'll do one round and teacher coaches will work with them, another round, teacher coaches. And we have some of that structure already in place, but I would be interested to find out a little bit more about that, if I could remember the name, that would be a little helpful. I'll come up with it. It's a great, great visit though. If you haven't done it as a board member, it's an hour. They get you in and out in an hour and I'd recommend it.
I agree, it's impressive.
I have some updates from the community education. And there's a few here. Kathy told me I could shorten them, but they're all so great. I didn't want to cut anything out, so. So, turnout was great for the November 5th Mater Read-I. It's author event featuring, it featured Allison McGee this year, so. it featured Allison McGee this year, so nearly 100 people attended. The District Education Center has been hopping on two recent Friday No School Days. In addition to the regularly scheduled senior adult activities of bridge, games, zumba, and book club, community education hosted two babysitting classes for middle schoolers, a sewing class for grades three and up, and held early childhood screening. The babysitting and sewing classes were first-time activities in this space. So they're just continually growing. So impressive. The Early Childhood Parent Advisory Council hosted a November night, Fall Family Fun Night, and gym grand opening. And we've heard how great the gym is, and I think everyone here has seen it. And they had their ribbon cutting with the giant scissors. So that's right next door, and they had over 34 families, 35 families attend, so. The December Community Lunch typically has the most attendees, and it will feature the Silver Harmony Singers. It's at noon on Wednesday, December 5th. You need to register before December 3rd. And also, the White Bear Lake Area Historical Society will present the first in a three-part series on the many faces of the White Bear Lake area. The focus will be on the original people. It hosted its version, White Bear hosted its version of this event last night with over 100 attendees. And the Modamidi event will be a little smaller in numbers. It's during the day, but it'll be a longer event. So you could attend both. If you already attended the other, you could still attend that one, and you can register through community ed. So I just want to congratulate Kathy on all the wonderful programming.
Nice, thank you.
Okay, I have an update on the Special Ed Advisory Board, which we met a few weeks ago. We had presentations from groups for special ed families. The first one was from Valley Friendship Club. And if you noticed in your email, I sent you all a link to an article that was in the Star Tribune on November 2nd in the Inspiration section. And the Valley Friendship Club is a social group for kids with disabilities. And it really is just an inspiring club for kids. We have a family in the district whose two kids run the Curio Dance Studio in Stillwater, and they partner with them. They do just all kinds of great fun activities. It really is quite an impressive, impressive organization. We also had Young Life Copernicum, Copernum come and talk about services they had for kids, and they talked about passages. Tony Pierce shared information on the Modamidi Neurobiological Parent Support Group as well. And if anyone had any questions, the group meets once a month at 7:00 at the Modamidi District Ed Center. So if anyone has an interest, a support group for parents of children with ADHD, OCD, anxiety, autism, sensory issues, or related neurobiological condition. So along the same line, I missed our last regular meeting to attend the Youth Service Bureau screening of the movie Angst, which was a movie put out to help raise awareness of teen anxiety. And I have to be honest, it was a movie that was kind of hard to watch. It was all kind of a personal narrative. Kids shared their stories about anxiety. And a common phrase that you heard over and over from high-anxiety teens was, "It was easier to do everything right than to ever fail." A core fear usually drives the majority of an anxiety in a student, and learning to speak about emotions is often very hard for them. So this is a group, the Neurobiological Parent Support Group, that could be helpful. And St. Andrews also offers a Wellness Wednesday, which is right after school from 2:45 to 3:15 that they have. It's like an anxiety support group where kids can go and talk about the anxiety that they're feeling. If you had an interest in that, the contact is Heidi Lender at St. Andrews, and I believe they meet in the Youth and Sports Center. We also had a Gifted and Talented Advisory Board meeting. I can share the K-2 services at Wildwood. They offer wind services, 20 minutes for reading and math enrichment. I think that's once a week, maybe it's twice.
Does it pull out?
I think it's just enrichment within the classroom. The 3-5 offer accelerated math, one grade and grade plus, and clustered literacy in third grade, advanced literacy classes in fourth and fifth grade. And then in the middle school, accelerated math honors English and accelerated science. Today, Lynn and I also attended the 65th Annual National Association for Gifted Children Conference down in Minneapolis. And there were some great presenters. They mainly had one session just for leaders in schools, and Lynn and I came away with a great packet of information on developing academic policies on acceleration, which I will share with Barb for her to look at.
Perfect, thank you.
So, anyway, that is my update. Lots of stuff.
Thank you. Any other school board reports?
I didn't get a move if there was one, so if there was, I missed it. It would have been on the 8th, but I just realized that as I was sitting here.
Okay, well, I will start by once again thanking our community for supporting the levy and for coming out to so many, to our community meetings and being so engaged. It was, regardless of how people felt about the levy, the conversation and the engagement level was just outstanding, and it was so clear that at the heart of all of it was a support for our community. I want to also thank the, all the community members that worked so hard on getting information out to all of our, all of our community. Of course, you've mentioned already the staff here in terms of getting out, just working hard to get out factual information. It was a team effort, lots of people working hard. Bill and Alice, of course, as you recognize, have put a lot of work into making sure information got out there to everyone. And so, another thing that we're working on is trying to really get the good word out about what are the things that are going on around our school district. And Luke did a lot of that already for us, which was really helpful, to get the student perspective. We are also have put together a call for information to be able to, what we're calling, we're calling them Zephyr Celebrations. And so I have, people throughout the district will submit some good news items, I guess, for, throughout. And so that's what I'm going to let you know about. If you want to nominate someone or for celebration, you can contact Alice, who will be putting these lists together so that we make sure we're recognizing people. And of course, we want to make sure that we recognize the boys soccer team and coaching staff, including Dom Isaac for their conference and section championships, and also, of course, the girls soccer team coaching staff, including Dave Wald for their section and state championships. So as background, if you don't know, that the Zephyr Girls Soccer Team defeated Orono 1 to nothing in the state championship. And it was Modamidi senior forward Sonia Meyer who scored the winning goal with 7:24 remaining in the second extra time to give the Zephyrs the 1-0 victory. And I have to say, I just happened to sit down behind the Meyer family, and it was, and they, I had to leave early from the game because I had to get back here. But they, the grandparents included my husband in the celebration, grabbed his hands and started jumping with them. So our family got to be part of the big celebration. And my kids mentioned how much they appreciated watching all the Meyer family weep with joy and everything, so they were, they got to be part of that. So that was exciting for us. Also, thanks to Jim Lane and the Student Leadership Council, SLC, for their Tackle Cancer fundraising and their Modamidi food shelf collection. So they raised over $6,000 for the Tackle Cancer Fund and 1,817 pounds of food for the Modamidi area food shelf at St. Jude's. And so the students for the food shelf, the students collected items through their trick-or-can event instead of a trick-or-treat event. So thank you to the Student Leadership Council. Also, our Modamidi High School National Honor Society Vice President, Lizzie Kangas, along with NHS Secretary Luigi, and I forgot to figure out how to pronounce Luigi's last name.
Vigiano.
Vigiano, for hosting and running this fall's NHS blood drive with the American Red Cross. So, and because of these efforts, the American Red Cross saw 102 students, collected 77 pints of blood, and saved 231 lives on November 6th. So there you go, you got the details. I'm sorry, I didn't even realize I had them in there, so. Anyway, so those are our Zephyr Celebrations.
Nice. Anything else?
So you know what? I would just share with the board, I'm not sure if Barbara and I shared it, from the last city leaders meeting, that we talked about the work on County Road 12 starting this summer from Willerney to Hilton, and then Phase 2 will be in 2021. And just in talking about the traffic on the way to the school campus, they talked about a possible light at East Avenue, but no roundabout, just in case you're curious.
They meet again tomorrow.
Yes, and there's a meeting tomorrow. And Barb and I ran into the city administrator at the Chamber of Commerce Legislative Event on, was that Tuesday night? I don't know, it seems like 100 things have happened this week. Was that Tuesday or Monday? It was Tuesday night. And the administrator did share with us that initially, all the houses in Modamidi were going to be $750,000 houses, remember, and five-bedroom, and they weren't...
So that here in Adelaide.
In Adelaide, yeah. In Adelaide Landing. And they weren't selling, and so they're changing their model, so.
That's good. That's something more reasonable.
Yes.
Good.
We'll get more details tomorrow.
I bet we will. We need to adjourn, please?
Someone?
All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourn.
Luke, want to read it? You can get it back to me later.